Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Budget Workshop. Would you please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure does.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, welcome to the Budget Workshop. This is a little different than a regular meeting. There won't be any public commentary or, you know, comments from the Board and everybody. But I will remind everybody that if, in case of an emergency, we have exits here and to the back. And please just make your way calmly to the exits. And I guess with that being said, oh, I should just mention that Ms. Deanna couldn't join us tonight. So it will just be the six of us here. And hopefully she'll be back at our next meeting. And I guess that's right to you.
Okay.
I'm gonna go out in the audience. I'm gonna switch water bottles.
I will say that talking budget tonight just seems very much anticlimactic. Okay, so we're gonna proceed as we typically would. I will say that there are a number of questions regarding what's going to happen at this point with the state budget based on the $40 million appropriation that was just made to work through some of the challenges related to the coronavirus situation. So that all remains to be seen. So we're gonna move forward as we typically would. I've heard nothing about any changes to be made and certainly the impact on the markets. But we'll share that information as it arises and we'll move forward as we need to move forward. So tonight, we're going to address, actually, the Board has received a copy of Budget Draft Number Two, and we're gonna work through the 9,000 codes. And Dr. Acker is going to present the capital past, present, and future. Okay, so just a quick refresher here. We left off the last meeting. The State Controller has received a copy of our tax levy limit calculation. Our tax levy limit for 2021 is 112,816, 249. It's a 2.19% increase over the current year's levy. The Board has documentation. I shared some data showing the levy limits for all school districts in Nassau and Suffolk. And there is considerable variation among them. And most of it caused by capital tax levies that can be included as an exclusion. We do not have that luxury because we have addressed our capital needs via reserve. But I do know there is a neighboring district that has a tax levy limit above 7%. And they are looking at proposing something in the 5-point-something percent area. I don't know exactly how they arrived at that, but this is the type of variation that we're seeing. I think the average across the state is about 2.6% in terms of the limit. But we are what we are. So some of the challenges that we're currently looking at, you know, we're negotiating with a number of units. We've already spoken about some of our high-cost special education placements. And we do shop these around, but we need to put children in a situation where they can't succeed. And regardless of where they're placed, if it's outside the district, it is going to cost. Transportation costs, we're talking the 11, $12 million range to begin with. So even aligned with CPI, adding that percentage is going to have an impact. Technology costs, for those that don't know, our Phase Two smart schools allocation has been approved, so that will help defray some of the costs here. And obviously, some of the facility mandates that are ongoing, including visual inspections and the testing that we have to do in various situations throughout the district, does come with a cost. And they are unfunded mandates. So tonight, we're gonna quickly look at the 9,000 series codes. And that includes ERS, TRS, Social Security, workers' comp, life insurance, unemployment, long-term disability, health and dental, debt service, and interfund transfers. So in the composite, and most of this is in the, Mr. Giacomo loves to hear, it's in the health insurance category. But I hate to highlight that because I just hate to do that. But we're looking at about a 2.8% increase from 1920 to 2021. So looking at it category by category, let's start with ERS. And this is the retirement system that is designed to support our non-instructional or our civil service employees. Employer contribution rate, we pay a portion of our civil service salaries to the New York State Employees Retirement System. We do not set that rate. And also recall that this is based on a state fiscal year, which is April 1 to March 31. So it doesn't completely align with the school district calendar, which is our school year is July 1 to June 30. So there is some estimation here that goes along with this. But actually, we are looking at a 14.6% employer contribution rate, which is exactly the same as 2019-20. Little history here. And you'll notice we peaked in 1314 with almost 21%. And it's gone down, dropped since then. And this is what it looks like graphically. And we're actually budgeting a slight decrease in the ERS costs. One example here, there's a number of different examples, but we're also going to present some changes between Draft One and Draft Two in consultation with Dr. Acker and George Austin. We are not including, we're pulling a maintenance mechanic. We've lived without it for this long, so a salary plus benefits is going to come out of the budget that would also reduce, for example, the ERS costs that go along with it. Next, TRS. These are for our certificated employees, administrators, teachers, teaching assistants, anybody with a certificate. And this aligns with the school fiscal year. And we are estimating, actually, it's probably set in stone at this point, a 9.53% employer contribution rate. And that's up from 8.86 in the current year. Little history here, actually, a lot of history here. Interestingly, if you look toward the beginning of the century, how low the rates were. And then they peaked again in the 2014-15 school year. And look at how high they were to start, back in the middle, late '60s. But obviously, salaries were a lot lower then. What it looks like graphically in terms of percent, this is not an absolute dollar value. Graph would look completely differently then. And we're looking at about 17800 in terms of an increase. And this is based on what we project our increased salaries for 2020-2021. Social Security, if I get Medicare as examples here, 7.65% of salaries. Again, we don't determine this as a district. And we're looking at a 178, 851 increase, about 3.77%. One of the questions that I played with prior to this presentation is why is this increase higher than the TRS increase? There are certain people who are not attached to TRS at all. Those would be our substitutes, any overtime, summer work, et cetera. It's included here. It's not included in the TRS code. Those would not apply, those positions would not apply to TRS employer contributions. So that's why this is a little bit higher in terms of absolute dollar increase. Workers' comp, we are self-insured. And we have used each year the designated reserve fund to cover these costs. If we don't use all of the reserve monies that we have budgeted, and obviously, you'll see the reserves in a future presentation, they would go back into the reserve for future use. And we are anticipating the ability to lower the budgeted number by about $50,000 based on some of the work that we have done in the past year-plus. Life insurance. This is collectively bargained for some of the units, employees in some of the units. And again, this is a small policy increase that we anticipate here. Unemployment. Again, we have little control over what's paid and what's not paid. Sometimes you think that the unemployment board is going to come back and say, you should not pay this. And we end up paying it and vice versa. And we do have a reserve fund here that we have used to cover some of the associated costs as needed. And again, we probably won't need that 100,000, but just to stay safe and not get caught short here, we are keeping the budget flat. Disability insurance, once again, oops, did I miss something here? Yes, there's a description that's missing there. But I'll fix that. In terms of cost of disability insurance, this is not a high-cost entity. And the bottom line is we believe that leaving it flat is the way to go here. Health, dental, this is also established for collective bargaining agreement. And each different unit has a different rate of contribution. The health insurance rates are set by the Niship Empire Plan. Also includes Medicare Part B reimbursement payments to retired employees. Couple of facts there you should review and be aware of. These have not changed. And this is where the bulk of the 9,000 costs are sitting. We did reduce this to a certain extent. There are some unknowns here. We may be able to reduce it a drop further. We are looking at and anticipated, was it 7, 8% for 2020? Is that about right, Dr. Acker? And we don't know what will happen at this point in 2021. The health insurance rates are based on calendar year. Other benefits, non-elected 403B contributions. These are separation payments for instructional retirees. And actually, I believe this is a pass-through?
Yes.
You're gonna take care of that yourself. Debt service, principal and interest associated with TANs more than anything else. And our premium due to good credit rating is on the revenue side of the ledger. You won't see that here, but you will see it as we speak to revenues. This is a function of our low debt level, almost negligible debt level at this point. Our cost in terms of debt service is based on an amortization schedule. We have about $1,040,000 left on the books here from a 2006 bond issue. Down the road, another bond entered the picture. It would obviously increase this debt service, but we have done a very good job of reducing debt and still getting the work done that needs to get done. Interfund transfers, couple of different things included here. This is movement of money. It's a pass-through code. And you'll see in the numbers in a second how it works as a pass-through code. Actual budget variance is due to that mechanism. You'll see it in a minute. It includes our debt service. And actually, coming back here, yes, this includes our debt service. It includes our special food service fund transfers as well as the special aid fund. And this is something that the state budget has been toying with in terms of the portion that we do need to set aside for special needs. It used to be district pays 20 and the state pays 80. That may not be the case moving forward. So we're certainly watching that very carefully. Pass-through is the reason you see the actual cost look much higher than what you see on the books right now for 1920 and what we're budgeting for 2021. You've seen this slide before. So again, we're looking at a 2.8% increase in our 9,000 codes. So some of the changes we have made to the budget in its composite form since the last meeting, and this is in number order here, so we've made some adjustments. I'm not gonna speak to each one of them individually, but at the end of the presentation, if you have questions on any of them, they can certainly be answered. But we have taken almost $550,000 out in net form on the expense side of things. One of the things we have not touched yet are reserves and some of our revenues. That's something we're gonna look at between now and Draft Three. But again, keep this in mind in terms of questions at the end of the presentation. We have adjusted some revenues, however, based on new information received since the last meeting. So these are monies that no longer need to be included in the tax levy because they represent increases in other revenue. So if you take the 550 here, 549.4 here, and the 174, almost 6 here, add them together, and that is the savings since the last budget presentation. We're getting there. Okay, so that middle column has changed since the last draft was issued to reflect the two slides I just showed. So the gap that we're now looking at is 1.369 and change. The last column has not changed at the levy, actually, it has changed a little bit because the revenue has changed. But the tax levy itself has not changed, obviously, tax levy limit. It was just over 2, 2.0 and change, almost between 2 and 2.1. The last couple of hundred thousand dollars here are probably gonna be the biggest struggle, but we will find a way to get there. Yep. I don't know if I'd use the word painful, but it's, we're gonna have to make some decisions. Right now, there's a lot that's painful. I don't know if that qualifies as painful. Yep. This, honestly, we got this.
Maybe I'm just having a block, but what, BOSI's revenue is what, is from where? And it's just not clear what that is.
There's a couple of things. It could be a refund. It could be aid in the form of BOSI's aid. Remember, and that comes with a cost because you're gonna get more aid if you spend more through BOSI's. And each year, we do get a refund. But this is, I think this is primarily aid. Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Right, so even though that looks like a benefit there, it does cost more to get that much aid in return, so.
Well, or you're spending it through them instead of spending it someplace else. Right.
Typically, if you purchase something through BOSI's, it is more expensive than purchasing it directly from the vendor. However, you are getting, depending on the aid ratio, and there are some, there are some things that we spend on, we'll get 50% back.
Right, like when you go to the store and the sticker price is higher at one store, but you have a coupon. Yes, that's exactly what I was thinking.
That's it. Bring it home, yes. Okay, so where we are today versus the levy limit, again, we've certainly come down a bit. Current draft is a 3.18% budget-to-budget and an estimated tax rate increase of 3.43. Just by chance, at the levy limit now with the change in revenue, the budget-to-budget and the tax levy limit and the tax levy increase and the tax rate increase are very close together. Obviously, the tax rate increase, assuming the assessed valuation, or we assume that the assessed valuation will remain constant, both are at 2.19%. The tax levy increase and the tax rate increase. And by chance, the budget-to-budget is right there as well. Won't spend a lot of time here, but the required budget reduction, if the tax levy were to remain the same from this year to next year, if a budget were voted down, on top of what you see today, we'd have to pull out another 3.8 million, and that includes removal of all equipment, remaining budget reduction, we'd have quite the time trying to pull another 3.3 million out of the budget. Okay, and that 785263 is in the lower right-hand corner of this slide as well. So we replace the tax levy limit column with a contingency column. And that tax rate, 245.65 in that last column, is exactly what we're looking at now. The budget-to-budget increase in contingency goes up a little bit because of the slight increase in revenue, which is reflected outside of, you know, obviously, that's going to impact the total budget as well. Okay, so that's gonna move us to the exciting portion of this evening's presentation.
Well, there's pictures, so it makes it more fun right there. Wait a second, your sister works it. Okay, so we're good. All right, so this brings us to the capital portion of the presentation. So as you know, we're working off a five-year plan. This is the last year of the five-year plan. We were hoping to be able to do our new five-year plan, but the state decided to stretch out over three years when school districts can do their building condition reports. And we're not on the schedule for this year, so we have to do a visual, but so we won't get an updated five-year plan until hopefully next year we'll get it. But we still had a lot of projects that hadn't been completed yet that we were able to pull from to recommend for next year's work. So all of our capital expenditures are funded via the Building Improvement Funds, which is our capital reserve funds. And it's a voter-approved cap on fund contributions and how much we can put in to each reserve and how long we can, how long we can put into a reserve. So it's very controlled as to how much money you can put in there and for how many years you can contribute to a reserve.
Just before you move on to the next slide, you have, I think it's in the pub area, the five-year plan is attached.
Yeah.
As is the memo indicating what was put back into reserves based on savings realized by our votes here.
Yeah, you'll see that when we get to the reserve balances as well. So this is the fun part. This is the pictures. Okay, so we did three roofs this summer. We have Jefferson and Flower Hill roof replacement. All right, that's always quite a feat watching them get this done when it's 100 degrees up. Or windy, right. Here's Southland's roof. Okay, these are all TPO roofs. They're white. They're supposed to keep us warmer in the winter and cooler in the summer. And then we have our vestibules. We only have a picture of one because all three look the same. So we have Flower Hill, Southland, and Washington vestibules were completed. And they each have a visitor and management system, the Raptor system inside. I'm sure many of you have already seen this in action. We also did some Jefferson student bathrooms. Here's a girl's room. The left is before, can't tell, right is after. And same here, left is before, right is after. Isn't that floor something else? We then had the Jack Abram Stadium main office fire-rated wall. The wall that was there before, obviously, was wood. It was not fire-rated, so that's been replaced, and it's now up to code. And Woodhull parking lot, which was a really amazing project to visit. And that machine, which is the second picture over, I love that machine. It grinds everything, it just rolls over cement, it rolls over asphalt, it just grinds everything to dust. It's just fun to watch. Wouldn't want to be in front of it, but it's fun to watch. And then this is the sidewalk. I mean, they did a phenomenal job. Watching this thing evolve was a lot of fun. And then here we are in the final stages. Looks huge. It is a huge difference that you can see, yeah, exactly. It's a huge difference that you can see. And boilers, I love boilers. You know how much I love boilers. Boilers are beautiful. So on the right, there's the old ones, and on the left, they are. Look how nice it looks, right? It's impressive. Boilers are beautiful. It's just when you go down to the original, it's just like, ooh. And then they do this. It just came out phenomenal. So they did a really nice job with that. Okay, and then we have the Woodhull vestibule where we had to pour a slab, put in some doors, and then create a transaction window through the wall there to create their security vestibule. And it's interesting because it's, you know, when you look at, you know, Woodhull's parking lot's going on at the same time, the boilers are going on at the same time, this is going on, so. It is, it was just like timing of all the contractors working together, and it's just, it's not easy to do. But thank goodness, we have such a great project manager. George Austin is there making sure that the boiler guys don't drive over the new, you know, parking lot when they shouldn't. So timing is important. Here we have the Finley Large Group Instruction Room. So in the original plan was not doing the stage, but as George pointed out, when this was almost completed, everything looked so nice. So we went ahead and we did the stage so that we have this nice, beautiful space now. I was just speaking to somebody who has used that space, who's thinking of using it again, and they're so excited to see it. I mean, they liked it before, so they're gonna be overwhelmed now. It really is, it really came out beautiful.
I could hear this room crying over that.
Later in the presentation, we can wipe some of those tears away.
It's poor room.
Okay, then we had the Finley roll-up doors. As you know, there was no egress, so it was just a big roll-up door, so we had to redo it. So now there's a point of egress that we have that door there that students can leave through. And then we have the Finley main entrance doors, which were just so old, they had to be replaced. And then we have the high school roll-up door that also made the egress. We don't have the group before picture here, but we had to put the door in, and then we did the storefront, so that's where students can measure if they need an emergency. And this was, Tom was happy about this, right, Tom?
It's good, yeah, came out nice.
Tom is very happy about this, so it came out nice, right?
Was that three doors, right?
What?
Was that the third door?
Is that the what?
Was it three doors that had, you had to go through for that?
Three doors?
With the roll-up doors, didn't you have to really return or something? Roll-up doors, okay.
Now we have the roll-up in the storefront, so. All right, so that was 2019 summer projects completed. It's always amazing when we can get that much done and still open school with everything completed. So I think a lot of our staff, they do a lot of work with it as well, so I think George and his staff are getting it done. Okay, this is our reserve usage. So as you could see, we've been putting funds in as well as taking them out. We have for the 1819, put in 2 million, and then the 53026 is interest. And then we use those funds for the upcoming projects that will be in the 1920 summer. Okay, so we have $3.846 million worth of approved work for the summer. There's a graphic representation of the use and the replenishment. That big spike there was this past summer, obviously, with the roofs and the boilers and the parking lot, so that a lot was done. So then for the summer 2020, we had approved in last year's, the voters approved in last year's proposition, the student locker replacement at Finley, the Huntington High School boiler replacement, Huntington High School partial roof replacement. The roof is so big that in order to do it all at one time, it was just so cost prohibitive, so we've been doing it in sections. And then obviously, the high school turf field replacement, perimeter netting replacement, and the goalpost replacement.
Is the high school roof gonna be the white as well, or is that gonna be something different?
George, is that TPO as well? Okay. We still have to do some more communication, but we're working on it. There's two letters that have to come from you and me, and then we should be fine, right? We're gonna attach it to, we have to work on that proposition with the attorney.
We ran it through a little snag with the lockers because they weren't attached to another project, and the state gave us a hard time because they looked at it as...
They looked at it, well, there was a document that came out in 2004 that stated that unless lockers, right, were attached to another, but... It's not really, it doesn't change the space. You know, you're supposed to change the space, improve the space. So even though we said that we have some ADA improvements in there and whatnot, it just, they've given us a hard time. Exactly. So we're working on having a small project approved. There's enough money in the locker project that we can do another project within it, right? So no additional money is needed. The lockers are probably gonna come in around four and change. So we have money left that if we add, if we redo the hallway, the tile, we do a tile abatement project for $10,000, then we'll get the aid. But the money is there already, but the state said, since our proposition just said locker replacement, we can't do anything else unless it's specified in a proposition. So we won't be asking them to re, for more money, just to redirect some of the funds to another project. And once we do that, it'll get the building aid. So that'll be, so the attorneys are working on that prop right now. Yeah, the voters have to approve because all, it said with 600 for locker. Then if now, if you do another project like a tile abatement, so giving us the approval to redirect some of that 600 to a tile project, because the money will be there because we're gonna be coming in.
Our aid ratio is between 37 and 38%. So worst-case scenario, we would have to, we'd have to put the lockers off for some of which I don't wanna do, nobody else does.
Right.
We're not gonna forego that 38% one way or another.
Because we'd have to put it out with another project in another year. Because we'd have to put it out with another project in another year, but we weren't able to work with the state. And they went ahead and approved and gave us the permit for the locker. As long as we get another project voter-approved, attached to it, we can get them done this summer. They take a long time to order, so that's why, how, what? 16 weeks to come in, so that's why this is a tough timing one. And then when they turned around and said they weren't giving us aid, we were scattering for a while, but we got it done.
Do we need to put the attached project for voter approval, or we don't?
We will have to have a proposition saying that, you know, the prior 600,000 that was approved for however they're gonna work for locker replacement, 10,000 of those funds be utilized for a tile abatement project. Which makes sense because when you're ripping the lockers out, something's gonna happen to the floor.
Yeah.
Right? So, you know, it's, but because we didn't state it, they're making us go out and say it again, even though the monies have already been approved. Okay, any more questions on 2020? All right, so future projects. So right now, the reason why we have a balance in the 2008, which we shouldn't, and the 2013, which we shouldn't, because we used all those monies for last year's project, is that all of our projects came in under budget. So again, thank you to the, the hard work that was done. But 1.4 million dollars back into reserve. So it's, so now we have that money, those monies there again to, and we, and I know the board had talked about that when they were approving some of the projects that maybe, you know, doing it back then when the price, pricing, prices are only gonna go up, right? So doing all those projects last summer, plus being able to come in under budget, I think it was a whole lot. Because now the, the prices of roofs, it's, it's, well, who knows? So that's the money that's available for the board to review and the superintendent to determine what, if any, projects she would like to put up for the voter approval next year. Going through the five-year plan and looking to see where the most critical points were, as well as some areas that the superintendent has some great interest in. We're gonna continue with the roof at the high school. That's another, well, not we, we are recommending, we're proposing that a partial roof replacement continue with the high school, another million dollars. Finley Middle School would be the next school that would need their boilers replaced. They have one that is put together with duct tape and crazy blue right now. And that's the better one, right? So we lost one this year, but they were able, they, we had, we had quite a little bit of an interesting thing with Finley's boilers, but they're the next school that would need their boilers replaced. You wanna add anything to that, George, or?
Well, with the section scrap, we got insurance, it wasn't sold, we can't afford it. So we found one in Idaho that's been shifting. I think it was like 65,000 dollars to get the solar insurance company paying for it. I don't mind that, which is wait for the bottle to arrive. And if it doesn't work, the insurance company will give the boiler, but you have to put that boiler up, I think we have.
Because of the size. Yeah, you have to replace them both at the same time. So, so that's just, you know, that's the, the next school that would need a boiler. And then we were looking into a science, we're doing a science room. It would be like an earth science, general science room at Finley Middle School, and that includes a prep room. Each science room costs $700,000, so that's something, you know, keep in mind, if you wanted two or three, each one is 700. Jack Abram Stadium Magnet School Auditorium seating and flooring. That's 300,000, so there's 3 million in proposals. And for additional consideration, I know some board members had talked about solar. So we did, we've been meeting with PSENG and talking to some companies and doing some analysis on what it would talk, cost to put a panel, try a pilot at a primary school on one of the roofs. So right now, it's estimated would be about 340,000 to do a, a primary school. This would be no energy performance contract needed because we would, if the board approves, they would use the capital reserves. We would own the panels, so there's no built-in escalation cost. If you lease them, might be nice in the beginning, but as it gets further and further into the contract, there's escalation costs. And many people have found out they're actually paying more than they would have if they just stayed with their regular electric. We're in the process of getting an analysis of sun exposure for each building. Right now, Southland and Washington are looking like really good candidates if decided to move forward. During the high solar months, say during the summer, any excess that is generated is banked. Then we can use it during higher demand months, like, so you can bank what you make in August and use it in February. And the bank is good up to 20 years. Yep. So, and it's good for, the bank is good for 20 years. Pretty much, if we went this way, the electric bill, use bill at those smaller schools would be eradicated. And the. Not the fees. It'll be about a 30, 40 dollar bill instead of, you know, 1,500, 2,100. And it, we should pay it off within six to seven years. And the panels last 25 years. They're held down because I asked, are you gonna hurt my new roof by drilling holes in it? They don't do it that way anymore. It's all held down with ballast and weights. They come in and that's how they install it.
So we're paying about 60 grand a year electricity at the primary?
George, is that correct? Yeah.
Are there additional insurance costs for having it on the roof?
Um, that I don't know. It's a good question. I'll have to find out. I'm sure there'll be something.
There always is.
We own it. It's gonna be part of, I don't know if it'll be considered part of the asset. It'll be considered part of the assets of the building, probably, but I'll have to find out. I'll ask nicer.
I was thinking more like a liability insurance, not property damage. Like, I don't know. If it's held down with ballast, could it blow off? Could it? I don't know.
Well, I did ask that, and they, they said, they, the way they design it, they, 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 it's, it's, it's not going anywhere, the way they design it. They, they do an analysis of wind shear and, and all this stuff in order to put it, put it on. That's how they do them now. They very rarely now actually use penetration to, to attach them. They do it with ballast and weights. First, I'll research it.
Maintenance and things like that, ongoing maintenance, you know, some, the panel goes bad or something like that, warranties and all the, you know, replace, yeah.
A kiosk in the lobby, so kids can also see the energy that's being generated, so they can see that. And the carports are about double the cost, and then we also have to worry about people running into them or them getting plowed into during, you know, winter months. So it, you know, seemed like the roof project was the, kind of the most cost-effective, but as well as it would generate enough energy to, to get it done.
And this is give you like a small bite study, so you can say, okay, yeah, this is gonna work for, let's say, a, a Finley or the high school type of scenario as well?
Right now, we're looking to consider the four primaries through the years, if that's what the board would like to do. The other schools will have to, like you said, see how it goes, because those are gonna be pretty, a lot more expensive, obviously.
But they also generate more.
Right, but they generate a lot. So, yeah, yep, yep.
Do we need an architect to do this?
Yes.
So there'll be an additional fee?
No, that's included in there.
But don't they get paid 7%?
Yeah, but that, everything is included in the three, it's already included. Architect fees, any, you know, incidental fees, contingencies, that's all included in the 340.
Are there any government credits that we can find?
No, school, school districts can't get it. We're still waiting on rebates on, on the roofs. So there's no rebates available.
I have a question about the, the roof replacement. So we did a, we're doing a partial this summer and then proposing a partial for next year. How many parts are there?
How many parts are there? What would that leave us? How many parts left? And this summer is, is what?
Well, I for one am happy about the solar project.
See, there's some fun stuff in here, right? But now we're back to reality. All right, other priority to think about in the future, we still have four primary schools that will need boiler, boiler replacement. But, you know, we could get a couple more years out of them. And the reason why Jefferson Primary School is higher than the others, it's that it's hot water. Jefferson's built on a slab, so that's a hot water system, which is more expensive than a steam system. The other three primaries have tunnels underneath, so that's why they have the, the duct work for the steam. So when they put Jefferson in, they put in a hot water system, which is why it's a little more expensive to replace. So, that said, we would have the propositions on the ballot, one for the 2021 budget. And proposition two, if the board decides to move forward with any capital work, would be capital reserve appropriations, where voters must approve release of monies already situated in the capital reserve funds for completion of state-approved projects. No additional impact on tax levy or tax rate. And if not approved, monies remain in the capital reserves and cannot be used for any other purpose. So I'll just go on to budget timeline. So on March 23rd, we have instruction and staffing. April 6th, revenues and budget review. April 20th, budget adoption. May 11th, public hearing. And May 19th, the budget vote and the Board of Ed election. And that concludes this evening's presentation. Oh, how, what, how many more years? Four years. Another four years. We can't. Yeah.
You know, there's, there's probably need, as much as we have all this, I'll, I'll be the one to say, you know, I would love to see another field Finley if we could roll it, you know, as we roll the other one of the debt service off.
One of the problems with it was another, it's a zero, do it as a zero financial impact to the community.
One of the problems with fields now is you get no aid back on it, and that's why we didn't go there at this point. Probably have to go into a bond.
No, no, definitely. That's why, that's when the other one comes off.
Well, I mean, of course you can do it, yeah.
I know, but to do it as a kind of zero financial impact, it's possible. So, you know, it doesn't impact us year over year on our regular budget and stuff like that, and we can still get the additional, you know, capital upgrade and stuff like that.
One of the things that, I mean, we're, we're proud of the debt level in this district, and one of the things that, that other districts have done is they, when debt comes off, they immediately put it back on, so there's no spike during the following year for the debt service. And that, that, that's something, obviously, we've been whittling away at. If there were to be a large bond issue here, our debt service would spike, we'd probably amortize it out, but it's gonna spike that X number of dollars during that, during that first year.
Oh, yeah, and so that's a whole thing, I think. Why, it doesn't have to be a big thing, right?
Shouldn't leave it up there? They are gonna, you're gonna just.
Thank you, Dr. Ecker. Very nice. It's very exciting.
So at, at this point, the way our timeline works is we would like to have resolution prepared for the board on March 23rd with the selected capital projects, reserve-funded projects in that resolution. So now is the time for you to discuss, provide any feedback.
Tell us a little more about the science rooms in Finley. What, what's the condition?
I can, I can speak to that because that science room is there. I pressed for that. The science rooms at Finley are beyond old, decrepit, and are in desperate need of an upgrade. We have Regent's class taking place in a room that's, that's essentially, it's scientifically useless at this point. We really need an upgrade. It is definitely the first, one room, it's definitely the first.
Archaeology, maybe.
If we break down some of the tables, yes.
It's just tables.
Yeah. No, but I mean, I mean, we've redone the high school twice, and we haven't touched Finley yet in the science area. I'd love to be able to do two rooms there based on the number of classes that we have, but to do one, one room right, we definitely have good reasoning behind wanting to start there.
And there's no way to rein in the cost of that at all in terms of, I, and I, and I'm not looking to, I mean, if we're gonna redo the room, I wanna see it made in a way that's gonna be the most useful. But I'm just so surprised at the cost of that room.
Okay, so it may come in less.
What does go into a science room, though? What?
Well, you have, you have lab tape, you have lab furniture, you have cabinetry, you have, you're probably gonna be pulling up the floor there because those, those tables are attached to the floor. You've also got the prep room. You wanna make sure that it, it is chemically sound and safe. You know, there, there's a lot that, I, I don't think we're looking at, at gas in this room because it's primarily an earth science classroom, but you do wanna. Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I've seen the labs, the lab activities, they're, they're done, you know, they, they, they do the best they can with them, but we, we need, if we want the kids to experience what we want them to experience, we need more than what we have there now.
So is that a matter of if you did two rooms, it would be done, or is it three rooms?
Well.
Or four rooms?
No, I think, I, I think two rooms would probably make me a lot happier than, than one room at this point. I don't think four would be necessary, and they don't all have to look exactly the same. But I think two fully-equipped science lab rooms in that building would, would be enough to get us to where we wanna be instructionally.
So is that something that we could, would consider bumping that 700,000 dollar number up to accommodate that? Or is that, like, you don't wanna add more money to that total of 3 million?
One this year, one next year.
Well, that, that would be, you know, ideally, that's what we've been doing. We've, we've got our priorities such that we can do, we can chip away at it.
Yeah.
Make it a million and try to get two in on a million, something like that.
That's kinda what I was thinking.
Right.
Especially if you're doing plumbing. I mean, wouldn't you want it, if they're close to each other.
But we'd still have, I, I don't know if that number would be, wouldn't a million, would a million-dollar number be feasible at this point? We'd have to know that before the.
But it gets you, it does get you considerably closer, I would imagine, to being two rooms.
Well, right now, if, if the board were so inclined to approve the 3 million, which were our first four priorities there, and then a school for a solar project, you're talking about 3.34 million. There, there is another 657,000, 700,000 dollars to play with there, and that would probably suffice. But you'd be, without anything considered in terms of savings, you'd be drawing down your reserves completely, which I'm not opposed to at all.
Well, I, I certainly want to do at least one solar project.
I do too. I feel really strongly about that particular thing also, especially given, truthfully, I would've thought those costs would've been swapped. I would've, would've thought the solar panel would've been closer to the 700,000 to a million cost, and the classroom would've been more like the 350,000. So I, I really am, I, you know, I feel very strongly about going ahead with that. With this, well, truthfully, with both, but with the solar project, I think is actually, I, I wouldn't say, I mean, it's kinda cost-effective.
And we, we can try to get an accurate, a, a price estimate as possible on two rooms. Just, just keep in mind, if, if we're underestimating the cost, we will preempt ourselves from doing some of this work, so we gotta be careful with that.
No, and I don't wanna be frivolous with the money, and in some ways, I don't like the idea of paying down our, all of our, you know, capital reserves. I, I, I don't know why. I just feel like maybe we should. I, I, I don't know why, I just feel like maybe we should leave.
Well, with four sets of boilers that are on the verge, how on the verge are they? No, I mean the ones, the future proposal ones.
Is there a way to generate revenue from this room if we redo it?
Probably. I, I don't know if it's gonna generate much more than we're, we're grabbing now, and even if we do generate a little more, it's, you're talking about, um, $10,000 like that. I'm just making up a number. It's not gonna be high, it's not gonna be high number. We had a much greater chance of getting more in the high school auditorium with the, with the air conditioning, and we did, and I don't know how much did that add per year. It wasn't a huge number.
Right. But speaking of the high school, this is future, not talking about putting this in right now, but if we could just keep in mind, you know, everybody, um, sees the places where they spend a lot of time, and of course, they spend a lot of time in the high school auditorium. So that stage is in need of some help also. The actual stage, the, the, the floor itself, it's not even, and it looks messy for, and it's one of our pub, really public spaces. So just throwing it out there for future consideration. And the curtain, of course.
I don't know if it would require capital, that ma- I don't know if it's an in-house project or if that's something that can be done.
Oh, fantastic. Oh, right.
Thank you.
'Cause you know those trap doors have always been a source of thing for me.
Speaking of, speaking of that and not mentioned tonight, I'll add it because it just came back to memory, uh, the high school gym is going to be gutted this summer, new floor, uh, stripped and repainted. It's going to look like a new facility based on the work that we're doing in-house. So it, and, you know, we have some booster club support there to, to, to do some of the work, but the yellow floor is gonna be gone, it's gonna be a brand new bright white floor, the paint, the, the job in there is gonna make it look like a new gym.
Great.
Which is also greatly needed.
Very public space that we, you know, shows aren't, yes. Not that we shouldn't do it just for our kids, but I'm saying in general also that it's part of our persona and pride that the kids take in when other people come to see.
A lot of people spend time in there.
Yeah.
So are you looking for us to, not to vote on anything, but just to give you some?
Well, we'll, it, the next meeting would be when you would vote on approving a resolution, adopting a resolution that would allow us to put the proposal on the, in front of the voters in May.
So are there any changes that anybody wanted to see to this besides the, the thought of exploring a second science room? Is everybody happy with the other things that are on there?
Well, I wanna go back to the, uh, solar for a second. So I don't see that as a pilot so much as we've never done it, but a lot of other people have now, right? There's enough information out there so that you can talk to, I don't know if you've talked to, there was some folks up at Albany.
Oh, they, 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 they caught my ear.
Bruce, Bruce Aimee's been doing this for a while. He was the superintendent at Avon. He put a whole bunch of stuff in, but they've got enough data to be able to really tell you what the costs and what the returns are. Yeah, 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 but so, the reason that I was going there is if, you know, most of the capital work that we do, you spend a whole lot, lot of money, and then over time, it just kind of, you know, kind of straight line, um, degrades, not, not, you know, I forget the word.
Appreciates.
Appreciates, there it is. Whereas this isn't, this goes the other way. This actually ends up saving us money. So my question is, have you looked at the idea of, you know, is this the kind of thing where it makes sense to finance it? Because the savings that you'll see ultimately can pay for the cost of the money to put in more than just one. Because again, yeah, so maybe our, our, our net positive, well, our, our, our savings really start in six years, but we would have one school, right? And we would also have eaten up 340 grand of capital reserve that, I'm with you, I'm not crazy about running down to zero. But if we look at, you know, financing three of them, put up a million dollar bond, does it make sense?
Capital profits entirely.
Does it make sense over, financially over time, because then you'll use the savings to pay off that, you'll pay that, that debt service over time? So have we, have we looked at that, is I guess what I'm asking?
You're talking about an energy performance contract or, or?
Or even just, no, just financing that so we can do more than one, because the numbers are, are fairly well known. And it's, it becomes just an equation of what, what would the cost of money be?
I, I don't think it would be.
What would be the rate of return? And maybe it's a, a 10-year net positive, but then we've got three buildings, and from years 10 to 25, we got three buildings cranking out savings.
You're saying it's not something a bond could pay for?
I, I don't, I don't think this is bond worthy. I think this would be more along the lines of an energy performance contract, and, and the fees that go along with that eat away at the savings over time. I, I don't know what the, what the schedule of payments would look like.
It just seems, 'cause there's, I don't think there's a whole lot of question here, except, I mean, the sun generally comes out a certain number of days every year, the panels perform to a known rating. There's gotta be an equation we can run to figure out whether the cost of financing, it makes it have more sense to do more than one roof and not into our, eat into our capital reserve, but still get the benefit. Maybe the payoff is another four years out, but this is a long-term thing. You're talking a 20-year benefit, and if it takes us another few years to start seeing the benefit, now we're gonna see it even larger after that. So that's what I'm asking about.
Well, it, it's a whole nother, it's, it's a whole nother cost category. I think we'd have to, we'd have to investigate quickly and, and a little bit further with either ECG or, or some of the other companies that are out there to see what it would cost us long-term as compared to this.
Once we get into the world of panels, we're gonna realize that down the road, i- it, they're gonna become more and more efficient, and we're gonna wanna replace them, and we're gonna, we're gonna go down that road that we do a bunch now. We're gonna wanna replace them when they become more efficient. I kinda like the idea of doing one now and one at a time, so that it, if efficiency improves, we can install a more efficient one down the road.
Well, I don't, I don't know that their efficiency is, is occurring that rapidly, and if you do one this year or two this year instead of four, um, you know, the, the way any technology advances, it's, it's general, at least a, a two-year period before it's going to be in the marketplace and that much faster, um, or that much more beneficial as far as what it does. So in my opinion, you know, a- again, it's either, I would, I still think we should do all four schools, um, and because we are getting a savings from it. And even though we are utilizing capital money, uh, we're not, I mean, it's, it's money we have, and it's money we're ultimately saving.
At, at $340,000 a school, we don't have enough in reserves to, to cover all that and the other recommended projects. Something would have to come out.
And the savings wouldn't be going back to the capital reserve necessarily, it would be, I mean.
What do you mean the savings?
He's saying it gets, kind of gets paid for by the savings, but they don't go, it doesn't, those savings don't.
The savings are realized over time, you know, obviously, you're, you're reducing some of your ongoing electric and other expenditures. The focus has been on avoiding the energy performance contract. What, what has been the, I'll put you on the spot for a second, what, what is, what is the benefit of avoiding that?
Well, typically, the, the, um, the way that EPCs have been working lately, they, they want you to enter projects, and then you use that savings to buy the next project. But, and it, it primarily starts with L B lighting, right? Anybody you talk to, they start with L B lighting, and then they use that savings to fund their next project. But we got our L B lighting for free, so we didn't need to enter into an EPC. So we would just be entering into it with, what are we looking, what are we looking for the savings to then buy, or it's not gonna be enough by the boiler. Typically, in the EPC, they, they sell to the project we do now, so generating enough savings, then you connect to this project, and then you connect to this project, and then you're, you're debt, right?
Energy related projects.
I feel like we were happy when we got out of one of those recently.
I was just gonna say, I feel like we have been trying to avoid being in the.
We paid it down again, just to avoid the, the future debt service. So we did that a couple of years back and, and. Well, I, and, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong here, I think his suggestion is coming from a place of, well, we can, we can do more of them at this time in that.
Right, to get enough.
With, with, with that mechanism.
My, my, my thing is if it works for one school, then it'll work for any of the schools that we put in.
Well, I'm sure, and, and the work.
And so I, you know, if it's just a matter of we don't have the capital funds to do all the schools, does it make sense to, you know, borrow the money to be able to do it? And Xavier, to your point, I, on these kind of things, I agree with you, they're getting more efficient, but if the numbers work now, it's not like the panels get less efficient as they sit up there. So the numbers will work going out. You might, the next project might show, you know, a two or three year quicker return on investment, but if it works now with the numbers as they are, yeah. And it's kinda like the whole argument, we're not gonna go to Mars now because in two years we'll get there, a year quicker, and then you end up waiting, never going, because it's always gonna be quicker, 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 right? So the whole idea is if the numbers work, the numbers work, but I don't know if they work with financing costs. That, that was my real question, because I, I believe that now's the time that if you can afford it and the, the, the savings pay for the, the cost of the money, I think it's a good thing.
And maybe that, that the word, I think pilot was used because it's one school.
No, I understand, I understand, right.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I understand. No, I, that's semantics, I was more about the idea of if it's good.
What's the life expectancy of our roof? So if, if a roof needed to be repaired or replaced, do we have to remove the panels?
And they're not, they're not attached to the roof?
Anybody else have any questions, comments, suggestions? All right, thank you both very much for your presentations.
Alright, so we, we will have to prepare something, and obviously, information will be shared along the way, but we'll have something prepared for you to, just based on the timeline, would have to be adopted on the, on the 23rd.
Yeah, so everybody should be ready to vote on the 23rd, so make sure that you've done your homework, so you know what we're voting on.
We'll review our, on our end as well. Um, and just as a reminder, there are two other items in this, uh, section of board docs. One shows, again, the transfer back into reserves based on savings realized, then the 19, uh, 2019 summer projects, and also the five-year rolling plan that has been modified. It's a living and breathing document.
I know that, uh, Bill brought up the idea of putting in a, a, a field in Finley. Is that something that we would wanna consider in the future?
Uh, the, it was something that was on our radar this year, either there or at the high school, but the problem we're facing now is there's no, there, there's no aid available on it. Um, and that's, that's a big hit, because if it's a brand-new field, you're talking about a, a 1.6, 1.7 million dollar expense from top to bottom.
So there's no aid for new fields, or there's no aid at all for field replacements, or?
Um. Yeah, if, if, if his. With the project that's already been approved.
But athletic spaces inside are educational spaces, right?
Is there instructional spaces, yes.
What if we like put anemometers on top of the goalposts for the science class? Yeah, why not?
We can put some tiles out there and.
And just rip them up and.
And then take them off, right. So it would be achievable then?
Even though class is taught out there.
And maybe some workarounds here, something, you know, we, we're gonna have to see how this plays out with what the governor's proposed at this point, but.
The soccer field, as I'm sure you know, needs, needs help.
Yeah, particularly during seasons where it's.
Sun seasons, yeah.
Exactly.
I mean, you'll have a lot of people yelling about one here at high school, but I think we needed it in Finley first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I, I will tell you that the majority of what is.
They will yell you, by the way.
I was gonna say, that goes without saying, though, right? The yelling part.
I'm, I'm gonna say, one, one of the problems, and I'm gonna throw this out there just based on what I've seen another district experience this year. Um, if a Finley field is put in, we have to be very careful, because I, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that, that's former farmland, and if soil is moved, it could cause, um, a major problem, and that's what happened in, in a neighboring district that did not expect that. It cost them a great deal of money from the company that was putting in the field, and it also caused them a PR nightmare.
What a nightmare.
And the geese.
And the geese on top of everything else.
It would be, it would be a different story if we were putting our field in at the high school for the first time. Now with, uh, I, I think Huntington High School's on a different type of land, um, historically speaking, but we gotta be very careful with, with how we, we maneuver this and build anything into the proposal to start, so we're not caught off guard either fiscally or, or otherwise.
Yeah, that's on your radar even, so that one comes time.
I watched it happen with this other district who just continues to, to find.
Nightmare.
Facility-related problems.
All right, so, um, do I need a motion to adjourn, or are we just adjourned?
No, that's just any, just walk away.
Get out, everybody. Thank you all for coming. Get home safely. All right, thanks, everyone.
You have nothing to sign.
I know, I signed it early.